Good evening, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually this evening, August 10th. It is a public hearing exclusively dedicated to Greenwich Hospital's three applications before us, which we are hoping to close tonight. Mr. Basili, court reporter, are you able to hear and etcetera?
Yes, ready to go. In fact, I've started already.
Thank you, sir. We will now commence the public hearing. Good evening, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We had a couple of items that you asked us to address as part of the hearing last Tuesday. And we had our traffic engineer Bernie Adler prepare a supplemental traffic study comparing the traffic generated by the buildings that are currently on the property and the uses for them being a medical office and residential with the traffic which would be generated by the Smilow Cancer Center. And what Mr. Adler's conclusion was is that in the AM peak hour, there would be nineteen more trips a day associated with the Smilow Cancer Center. And so that's essentially one car every three minutes. And the PM, the difference was only one more trip from the existing buildings and their uses compared to the Smilow Cancer Center.
So if I could do that, say that somewhat differently, I'm getting the existing is that you had a total of 123 in the AM and in the PM. If you combine the 55 and the 68, I'm getting a total of 123. Under the new, you would have, under ITE, you would have 375, which means an increment of 252 over the base of 123 to the, from 123 to 375. But if you use your own generated estimate, the hospital-generated estimate of trips, you have a total of 143 in the AM plus the peak PM, and the increment over the existing is 20 trips.
So would you like Mr. Adler to go over this report with you?
I believe, I believe it's fairly self-explanatory. The key difference is really this reliance to the extent that, you know, that you're using these, your own estimates of the trip generation of the, what you're calling, I forget how you're calling it, per your own land use.
It was called a sensitivity study.
Right.
And what Mr. Adler said was to look at the uses that would go on in the Smilow Cancer Center. And that's specifically treatment areas, treatment rooms, the length of time a treatment would occur, and what the turnover would be and how many you would expect in terms of patients at any given time.
Right.
I think.
So let me put it to you. Let me put it to you differently, Mr. Hegney. Based on what the use that you're expecting to have of, of the H2 zone at this time, you would only have an incremental 20 trips total in the, well, in the AM and the PM peaks. But, which is a nineteen trips in the morning and one trip in the afternoon. But based on the, on the existing site and the ITE numbers, you would have 112 and 140, which means that, and the only reason that those things are critical is if you were ever to take this H2 and revert it to a conventional medical use, you would see the higher trip generation. But with the, with the use that you're expecting to have, you see a very low increment over the, over what would be full use of the existing.
Well, that, that's true. And you have to look at how this building is being designed and what equipment is being installed as part of providing these treatments. This is not something that you would change overnight. It's not something you would change over a decade.
Yes, I understand that, but as Nick.
Equipment that are being installed.
As Mr. McRae loves to say, we make 40-year decisions around here. So we need to consider how the H2 could potentially involve and what the maximum use would be at the same time that we're cognizant that you're proposed, as you're proposing to use it, you would generate an increment of 19 in the morning and an, and of one in the PM. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
The second thing that you sent us, Mr. Hegney, is an analysis of the existing neighborhood.
Yeah.
Do you want to comment on that?
No, I was just going to include that as part of the record. I, I think it, the data speaks for itself in the GIS map in terms of the mixed use in this particular neighborhood. And the fact that you, you still have a 410,000 square foot hospital to the northern part on Perry Ridge Road, which has existed over the past 20 years, well with the neighborhood. I, I know that there have been issues at Benheim.
When did you complete the second pavilion? It doesn't matter. I mean, when you said, I was just trying to remember you've, I've got it somewhere.
2006, 2006.
When you said 20 years, I just wanted to point out to you.
That was the, that was the, that was the southern one. The, the Helmsley Pavilion, which is on the north end of the property, was done in, in 99, was completed in 90.
But the second pavilion, that it was done. And that pretty much doubled your square footage?
It was a considerable increase in the square footage, yes.
So, Mr. Basili, please go ahead.
My, um, hold on, my, um, this total screen went frozen for me when Mr. Hegney said that past 20 years it has existed well with the neighborhood. And then the next thing I heard was, and that pretty much doubled your square footage, so I must have.
So if Mr. Hegney and I will recap that part of the conversation, Mr. Basili, I then said, well, it hasn't really been 20 years, essentially, because the, the second pavilion of the hospital was completed in '06, and that essentially doubled the, the hospital's square footage at that time, as I recall it. In addition, the Helmsley Pavilion was completed, Mr. Hegney confirmed. I thought it was '95, but he confirmed that it was '99. So we agreed that in saying that the hospital has existed as is for 20 years, that that was meant, the hospital itself has been evolving in the course of those 20 years. I think that's a fair recap.
And, and I think you can also say the hospital has been evolving the last hundred years. Because it's been in this neighborhood since 1917. There was a very large facility there before the Helmsley Pavilion was constructed. And, and it's been a large presence in the community for many years. I think the, I think the building that was removed was actually taller than the building that, that we now have. And certainly, I think it was four floors before it was removed.
Okay. And is there anything else, Mr. Hegney?
Um, if I may ask along those lines, that the site where you're proposing this cancer center, was, was this always residential, do you know? Or how has this site changed over the years?
This site has always been mixed use. It has some multifamily housing, it has offices, it has single-family house. It has the medical uses. So we have roughly 38,000 square feet on site now. Twenty, roughly 20,000 square feet is, is residential. And 17,000 square feet is, is a medical office. So it's had a mixed use, a presence in the community for many, many years. Some of those buildings are, are very old and have been used as medical offices for a long time. Mainly because they have the hospital in close proximity and they want to maintain their office near the hospital itself. There are a number of other doctors' offices on Perry Ridge Road. There are some on Sherwood Place. There is a medical condominium, medical office condominium of roughly 20 units at 49 Lake, so just west of the hospital. So even with this facility changing from its mixed use to the cancer center, you're still going to have quite a few of medical offices in the neighborhood. There, there were a number of suggested changes to the landscape, mainly the retaining the wall along Lake Avenue, and a number of suggestions on changes to the facade material and, and makeup. Our architects did prepare a, a plan over the course of yesterday and today. I did submit those. It's the same elevations. What these, each of these sheets show is where those changes would occur. We haven't actually revised the plans. That would have taken more time. And I did want to add, when we first started with A R C, we brought all the sample materials, the brick, the limestone, the glass, over to the Planning and Zoning Office. Given the pandemic, I'm not sure how many people have actually had the opportunity to, to see it. But that, that, that's been there for a number of months. We just wanted to illustrate through these sheets that these changes could be made as part of submitting the construction documents for staff review. And we also eliminated one of the crosswalks on Lake Avenue. So there are only two, which there are just two now. One would have a flashing beacon along the lines of what we have in front of Town Hall. And the other would be a relocated crosswalk rather than going through the traffic circle. Would go just to the west of the traffic circle. And frankly, that was part of the recommendation of BPW as part of improving the traffic circle overall.
So, so Mr. Hegney, there's one that's a crosswalk that actually aligns with an existing stair in the middle of the two curb cuts on Lake. And then the next one actually crosses over.
Yes.
Crosses over the, I guess it's a traffic divider. Is that, is that, is there, is there an existing ramp on that far side that it, that it would meet up with?
There is a, a, there's a new ramp we would have to put in when you cross at that point. Because right now, you go through the middle of the traffic circle at Perry Ridge and Lafayette.
Okay.
And the purpose of the other crosswalk, which would have the flashing beacon, that is the, the staircase that's used by hospital personnel that would be going back and forth. So that's the reason for the location there. And the people coming out of the garage, rather than having the crosswalk all the, all the way to the west, would be able to walk up on the north side of Lake Avenue and use that crossing beacon there.
Great. Got it. Thank you very much.
Anybody, go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Madam Chair, I accept if there are comments by, from the public. I just wanted, Diane Kelly and I wanted to make some closing remarks if, if we could.
And do you want to?
After the public comment.
You want to do your closing comments after the public?
Yes, please.
Okey dokey. Then you're suggesting that I go to public comment. Does anybody from the Commission have any further clarification or questions for Mr. Hegney? Everybody shaking their heads. Okay. So with that, our first member of the public who has their hand raised is Dale Lewis.
Madam Chair, are we limiting the, the comment to three minutes?
I'm, I'm waiting for Patrick to start the clock. Patrick? All right, well.
Chair, it's freezing on me here. I, I will keep it right now and then I will, will.
Yeah, that's easy. I can just tell you when to start it and, and stop it. And I'm gonna, I am having trouble, oh, here he goes. Okey dokey. I'm having trouble again. It's taking several clicks to promote people.
I think we're experiencing the same. Are, are, are we limiting it to three minutes for the public?
Yes, three minutes. Dale Lewis, you, you have three minutes to give us your comment, if you would. If you would go ahead and begin, you're going to be timed and we don't have the timer on the screen. So you'll hear Patrick Leroux holler when he's ready. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank the Commission for so carefully listening to the neighbors, the neighborhood, listening to our concerns about safety and integrity of the neighborhood. I want to thank the hospital because I've been a patient both in the main building and in the satellites. And it's a world-class facility for sure. I believe that my wife and I own the only home that is connected to the subject property. We're just on Hill below the little AM church in the back door of property connects to the proposed building. I have to object to Mr. Hegney's characterization, continuing characterization of this as a mixed-use neighborhood. The hospital itself acquired and then raised private homes along Lake Avenue. And so it actually has affected the residential character of the neighborhood in a negative way. With the hospital's decision to replace homes that have now been torn down with a large residential building, the safety of, of people in the area has been compromised. The use of Lake Avenue between two busy traffic circles is really quite silly. And we encourage the Commission to turn down the applications and encourage the hospital to consider perhaps housing for its staff, which would be more consistent with the regulations now in place. But I thank you and thank everybody for listening to our neighborhood and our neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis.
May I ask you a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am.
Is it okay to, to jump in? I am kind of curious along those lines. Doesn't mixed use, mixed use work with, with a cancer center? Has that been with, or could, Mr. Hegney, is that something that is?
Um, we did the cancer center, we asked, we asked Ms. Kelly at the last meeting if they had considered a mixed-use development instead of the cancer center. And she said that that had not, was not something they had considered. Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, like, you could not presumably, I don't know. But like, you couldn't have the equipment that one would need for a cancer center with residences, or even if they were the nursing staff, right? I mean, that doesn't seem.
That's what we actually asked Ms. Kelly if they had considered doing a residential development and then doing some of the cancer equipment and facilities on site with that and combining that into a mixed use. And they said that honestly, they had not considered, they had not given it thought. But we did ask at the last meeting.
Given the specialized equipment that's here and the rooftop equipment that's needed as part of that, I, I would think that that would be very difficult to do. We do have our architects participating in the hearing this evening, if you want them to opine on that. But I, I would be surprised if that would be something that would be feasible.
Could, could it, presumably, I, I know you looked at one point about Benheim and what was going on there. And you really looked closely at all of the existing spaces and whatnot. But there's presumably no way to retrofit Benheim, let's just say for the sake of argument, to house some of this equipment that would be over at Smilow and, and put all of that type of use, so to speak, over in that building and then do the, you know, less dangerous, for lack of a better word, putting it, things over on the new, new spot. Meaning like a mixed use over where you're proposing Smilow. Do you see what I'm trying to get at there?
You mean like less infrastructure, the things that are less infrastructure over it?
Like radiation things? And, and that's what I mean when I say.
Of course, it's the radiation that we're looking to install in the basement or first level, which is completely underground in the new facility.
Right.
And, and that's a, a large part of what we're looking to do on the site. Also, parking then would be a particular issue. Short, short of going back to the, the drawing board and starting from scratch, I don't see that this is something feasible.
All righty then, Patrice McCann, if you would kindly go ahead. Patrick, are you ready to time? Ms. McCann, it's three minutes. And you're going to have to trust Patrick's ability to use his timer.
Of course, and, and thank you again. I'm, I'm sure you are so used to hearing my name, but I'm very appreciative of all the time and, and the ability to speak on behalf of my lovely historic neighborhood. I listened last week and, and again with Mr. Hegney today regarding the traffic study. And yes, I understand it's just for the hospital, but they're not taking into consideration that there is massive construction on 95 right now between Portchester all the way up to Fairfield County. So any day of the week between 2:30 and 7:00, when you come out of Lafayette Place and the surrounding areas, the traffic circles get overabundance with traffic. And then it sometimes takes two traffic lights to get on to Putnam Ave because the traffic backs up. So I feel that the study is a little bit false or just truly taking Greenwich Hospital. So want the, the Commission to know there's more to this. You know, it's a mess out there and it's only going to get worse. And, and in regards to the hospital, again, I have always said, and my neighbors have said, we're big fans of a hospital. As Mr. Lewis said, I use them. I have doctors there. I've used them for emergencies. But the only thing is, in the last 20, 40, maybe even 100 years, that hospital keeps encroaching on our neighborhood and they keep getting permitted zoning after zoning after zoning. We're not going to have a residential neighborhood if this passes. And I know Ms. Kelly said that this is really the only solution. It shocks me because it makes me feel that they've been so overconfident and they've always been allowed this rezoning and permission that they felt they didn't need a second alternative. I, I work for a major technical corporation that's global. And anytime we build a new data center to house financial firms and big enterprises, we always have an A, B, and C as a backup. God forbid something happens or we don't get approvals from other governments and the SEC. So again, I, I, I think everyone, but please turn this down. I just think that there's better places that Greenwich Hospital can go for a satellite off of Putnam Ave or Riverside. And truly, Yale New Haven, they have over a billion dollars in funds and sponsors and donations that they can take that money and help Greenwich Hospital put it somewhere where it will truly meet those 70% that are outside of Greenwich. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Patrice McCann. Thank you. It's like, I feel like the last line in Casablanca, you know, round up the, we do have people who have been, the next speaker is Barry Cohen. Again, Patrick, or whenever you're ready, Mr. Cohen is on the way into the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I'll have my own, I'm setting my own timer here.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the usual suspects. So anyway.
That's it. That's the line.
The, the, with all the extra parking that's being made, you know, available, one extra trip in the PM in terms of traffic. I mean, where all these cars that are parking are not going to be leaving or coming. It just doesn't make sense. But forgetting about that for the moment. Um, you know, last time I talked about the, the vibration of the building, the seismographical thing. I guess the only point I want to make is, you know, can we have a very accurate seismological report before any blasting occurs? Because once any blasting starts, if there's any damage to the building, there's no way they're going to fix it. It's too old and delicate for that. I know Mr. McCrae, Ms. McCrae said that it's, you know, they're extremely careful. And I believe that they have to be extremely careful. But we're also extremely delicate and across the street. So I'd like to see a report before, and of course, if they can't blast, they can't have the project. So I really want to see this covered before they go ahead with anything like that. And that's it. I don't even need my full three minutes.
Oh, thank you very much. Actually, Mr. McRae, Mr. McRae responded to the same point last time. And I'm going to let him respond as well this time on this. Katie, would you like to do that? Would you like to have a turn instead?
No, go ahead, Mr. McRae.
Go ahead.
Right. I, I think what we had talked about last time is actually the procedures for blasting here in the town. And as, as part of that, actually inspections of the adjacent buildings and almost to the effect, actually, of a plan for blasting. So the adjacent buildings are, are affected. The Fire Marshal's Office, Building Department actually are involved with this process. And the people who actually do it, the actual blasting people are actually, they're scientists. And as we had talked about, their insurance liabilities and something are, are very, very strict. And they go out of their way to make sure that actually whatever work they're doing on a property does not affect any way an adjacent property. So your thoughts on having a seismic report could be included. It would actually be part of the Building Department and Fire Marshal's Office just to make sure that they know what they're going to be blasting and how it's going to affect the neighborhood.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen.
You're welcome.
And.
Ms. Alvin?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how many speakers are there?
Uh, one, two, three, four more to go. And I've tried to move Ms. Fessoliotis in several times. There, it says it's, she's coming in. I, Patrick, it's taking several clicks. Is that what's happening to you?
I am experiencing the same lag, Madam Chair.
I ran the update too. It's not what it is. Dr. Fessoliotis, whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry, I just, it's, it's kind of a weird system tonight.
Yeah, it's, it's glitchy tonight. It took me several attempts to get each panelist in.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay. I just wanted to make some comments on the impact on the neighborhood that Mr. Hegney had stated. I've been in town long enough that I've seen the whole transition of the neighborhood and the hospital. You know, I arrived in Greenwich over 50 years ago. And the hospital has been evolving. And in the beginning, the hospital has been a good neighbor. But I, I can't say that the hospital has necessarily been a good neighbor recently. There are constant cars making U-turns on Perry Ridge into, into driveways because they miss the hospital, most of them with New York plates. The mixed use is not a hospital campus. And I just wanted to make that point because mixed use kind of connotes that there are some commercial developments, but there are also residential. And the medical offices coexisted in houses, not in office buildings for the most part. 49 Lake is recessed. It's behind the, the hospital in a parking lot. It does impact Glen Road because there are, you know, debris and things from the hospital that, that go on to Glen Road in that little cul-de-sac there. Also, the wall that you're preserving, thank you very much, but it does not make this neighborhood, the neighborhood. It is the, the residents and the, and the apartment buildings that are there, that have been there before the hospital or even at the time the hospital existed. One issue that was raised today by a neighbor that I happened to, to meet in the street walking my dogs today was that if you don't grant this today, the hospital, you know, states that they own this property. And, you know, they can always either repurpose the property or even sell the property to build a satellite campus elsewhere if, if that's what they choose to do. And, and I want to reiterate again. And I wanna reiterate again, satellite facilities seem to be the model with most of these hospitals. And it just also seems to me, listening last week, that really the location is more for the convenience of the doctors to walk across the street. It is for the convenience of patients also. But, you know, the doctors seem to indicate, at least last time, that they didn't feel that they, you know, should, shouldn't have to drive 10 or 15 minutes to get to a satellite facility. So all of those factors, I hope, will convince you to reject this application today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Feseliotis. Our next speaker is William Moyer. If you would go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, and again, you'll be timed three minutes. Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
A couple of things. I just wanna say first that the other medical facilities in the neighborhood that were mentioned are largely on a much smaller scale and traffic flow than anything the hospital has proposed. To suggest indirectly that they're surrogates for the hospital's proposals or facilities, I think is misleading. And also, I continue to find the traffic analysis conclusions out of sync with common sense. It's unfortunate that we do not have a more impartial analysis to compare it to. The second thing I wanna say is regardless of the outcome of this application, you know, we in the neighborhood will be watching carefully. I have no doubt the institution, the hospital, Yale New Haven Health would covet the acquisition of additional residential lots along Williams Street in addition to what the hospital already owns or an adjacent property such as the Prescott House, which would no doubt provide candidates for further and significant expansion and growth and requests for zoning flexibility and a further reduction of any lingering current and more affordable housing that currently exists today. There's strong neighbor sentiment to retain the character of the neighborhood and the hospital's growth plans are now pushing the envelope of what can be accommodated in this context. That has facilitated the wave of dissent we've seen this summer regarding the Smiler proposal, despite the fact that the hearing has been held over the summer when people were distracted by vacations or other seasonal activities. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moyer, and thank you for making the time. The next speaker is Maria Alpert. Ma'am, if you would go ahead. And again, Patrick's got the timer up and as soon as you're ready to speak, he will start timing you.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Hi. Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I, I've, I can't think about anything but this unfortunately lately, but...
You're not the only one. Don't worry. I think you're, you're dealing with some commissioners who have been thinking about nothing else.
Nothing else. When I moved from my, my home in Stamford, I, you know, I moved here to be in a... And I understand about how the future moves forward, right? But I moved here to be in a charming little neighborhood that I did not consider ever mixed use. We knew the hospital was here. It was great to have. Every time my older mother came to visit, she was always happy. You know, so I bought in a small neighborhood that was charming, close to Greenwich Avenue, close to a lot of different things, walking distance, sort of a change of lifestyle a bit, right? What I didn't expect was I would be buying into a neighborhood with, I don't even know if I'm using the right term, radiation bunkers being put underground. I understand safely, I understand that. Taking down, I don't know, 40-plus trees and weeks of blasting. That is sort of not what I signed up for. So from my personal point of view, at Fairfield House, you know, right, maybe not even 100 yards behind this, I would love, maybe not a rejection of the plan, but just some alternate use potentially for the land, which the hospital does own. Anyway, that's it for me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Albert. Our next speaker is Sue McLennahan. Did I pronounce that correctly, ma'am? And you need to unmute. Give it another shot. No, there you go.
Thank you for the time. It's been quite a few years since I've presented. Come before the planning and zoning. As some of you remember, I chaired the Board of Commissioners for the Greenwich Housing Authority. So I do come from a little bit of background about construction and my concern. And I didn't even bring it up until last week because originally I was asked to get some petitions signed in Fairfield House at 50 Lafayette Place, 5052. And my reaction was, I don't have a dog in this battle, but I then started to think about the blasting. And we have some stability issues here at Fairfield House that are very concerning. I addressed this to the Board of Directors Zoom meeting a week ago. And I was basically told, well, you know, Greenwich Hospital, they just always get what they want. So of course, that got me on my feeling. I needed to make some comments. I sent you some pictures of some of the problems that exist in this building. And I am just very concerned about the blasting and what might happen here, God forbid. So this is what I wanted to bring up. I was, hope you saw some of the pictures. I did not until most of them. But I have not pursued this with the Fire Marshal or anybody else. I did wanna make a presentation today. And I thank you for the time and hopefully everything, as I said, I've been taken care of by the Greenwich Hospital. I've recovered from cancer. So I really didn't have a problem with the construction until we started talking about the blasting. And that really scares me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I've been trying to promote Diane Kelly, but she is refusing to be promoted, Mr. Hegney. I'm not quite sure why. Oh, she has her hand up again. Let me give it a shot.
Madam Chair, I was gonna ask you to speak after
Yes.
all of the neighborhood comment, unless there is any more.
I have one more person with a hand up. And that person also, nope, three more people with their hands up. Okie dokie. So the next speaker is Curtis Wood. And Mr. Wood, whenever you're ready, Patrick will start timing you.
Hello.
Yes, hello, you're all set.
Okay. I am, my family's been in Greenwich for a long, long, long time. I grew up on Perry Ridge Road, 1961, and we moved to a few other houses since then. And recently, I sold my house in Grove Lane and I bought a house back on Perry Ridge Road at one of my friend's house who I grew up with. And this Perry Ridge Road has always been a very nice neighborly street and quiet and people walk back and forth on both sidewalks. Now the traffic is so intense. I have two, two children, 14 years old and a couple of dogs. And all day long, it's traffic, traffic, and traffic. And for Greenwich Hospital to say that the traffic is not gonna increase when they build their their new facility is very unfair. And not only that, I'm a real estate broker in town and I come from a family of real estate. And not only are you gonna affect our peacefulness and happiness and safety, you're gonna affect our property values all the way around. And when Greenwich Hospital built their, the new hospital, which stands now, I do believe when, when there was a, a lot of neighborhood reaction to the new hospital, I do believe the Greenwich Hospital said, yes, this is gonna be, this is it. We're not gonna build anything else. We're just gonna keep it as a small, low-profile, profiled community hospital. And that's it. And they did take the, and at the time of the new construction and the new engineering design, they did take the circle out. That was at the top of Perry Ridge Road. Now, as that last, one of your last participants talked about, people are always going past the hospital and always looking to turn around and someone's driveway are creating traffic. I don't even see how you can expect someone who's in an emergency vehicle, an ambulance, is going to the emergency room is gonna have that opportunity to get there when you put this new facility in with all the traffic, if it's a real bad day. You have two, you have very, very, very small streets that can't accommodate all the service vehicles, all the extra staff, all the patients from different towns, all their visitors. It's just completely unfair. When you can move out to, to the Post Road, US 1, and put the facility there where there's four lanes and it gives people better opportunity to get their loved ones there when needed. So, you know, I'm coming back as a Greenwich resident for a long, long time, for hundreds of years. You know, Tom's family was part of that founding family as well as ours.
Mr. Wood, you're, you're out of time. You're into the negatives now. But we got your, we got your, your point. We definitely did. So thank you very much, sir, for making the time to speak.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Lawrence Stern. Mr. Stern, if you would unmute. There you go. Hello, hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. Go right ahead.
I didn't have that plan on speaking, so I sound more random than usual. That's why. I wanted to comment on the crosswalk across Lake Avenue, Brooks Crosswalk. I believe, I know, that there used to be a crosswalk across Lake Avenue. And I assume that it was removed because it was unsafe, dangerous. People think about pedestrians and that, that's good. But, you know, you think about snow or a dark rainy night and a car, cars going up and down Lake Avenue. There's quite a gray down Lake Avenue. It's, it's a dangerous location to put a crosswalk and would not be a good idea. The other thing that I'm absolutely shocked at is that there's no, there's been no environmental impact study done on this ability. Apparently, it's not required. I don't know why.
No, sir, we, we, we get comments from our conservation department. The applicant has responded to those. But the town does not require an environmental impact statement. We can study it in the future. We're happy to do that. We're very committed to sustainability, but at this time, we don't require it.
And the other thing that I, that I think you should, should think about requiring, that the hospital should have thought about doing was put in solar, energy-saving things.
Well, the update for you on that is that the state is, the state has just allowed us to make that regulation by regulation. So we're gonna, pretty soon, we're gonna be requiring energy, energy, renewable energy, energy conservation, et cetera, from people. That's coming.
And I hope that the commission will, will give serious consideration to the fact that this is considered by the people who live here, a lot of people, to be residential. And this would change this irrevocably, I think. It's, if you're 40, if you're really planning 40 years out, you gotta look at where potential growth is gonna be and with the hospitals, where it's going next. And I think we're at risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for making the time. I think there's a puppy in the background with a squeaker there. Ms. Traub, if you would unmute, please. You are the next speaker, Sheila Traub. And Patrick is timing you. You have three minutes.
Well, I wanna thank you very much for the opportunity to speak again on such a really pressing proposal for our town. And I am going to ask that you consider postponing it for several reasons, so that additional work can be done. I'm delighted to hear that the state and that you are considering to deal with solar and other footprint issues. And that's something that this should certainly and surely reflect. I think we all are more than aware what's happening to our planet at this point. I also feel that I spent a little time looking through your, the files, the public files, and I thank you for that. And I'm most concerned about the fact that the study, which was done by an environmental analyst, you said it's been addressed, but it doesn't appear to be addressed. And it requires, it's dated May the 4th, 2021, and deals with the dangers of runoff and the high likelihood that the high daily traffic movement through the area, which has, in my judgment, been very insufficiently addressed. That more sophisticated measures are needed to address stormwater quality. I think it's highly irresponsible to consider anything until that is resolved, given what we are dealing with in this world of ours right now. And Yale New Haven has been around for centuries, for which we're thankful. I think it can wait a little bit longer and get this right. You want this, whatever the hospital does in future should preserve the existing vibrant neighborhood. In addition to that, it absolutely should adhere to platinum standards for the footprint that it has. And I just want you to think of this as a gullet. We are at the top of possibly the highest point in all Greenwich. And it's very, very narrow. And you cannot keep feeding traffic into it and expect to accommodate it, full stop. So again, I wanna thank you. And I realize that all of you commissioners and others have put a great deal into dealing with this. But I ask you to really consider stopping yourselves from making an irreparable mistake. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Traub. The next speaker, we have one more speaker, and that's Mary Hall. Ma'am, if you would go ahead.
I have sat over the last, I don't know how many years, on many, many planning committees, including the P O C D for the downtown area. And lots of experts come in and they ask, or one will ask, what gives Greenwich the value that we have, which our homes essentially have never lost? And one of the huge assets is medical help. When you live here and you need cancer treatments, particularly, many people cannot arrange with their finances or their lives to go to New York, Hartford, New Haven. And it is a huge asset at a time in their lives when they are most miserable to have this facility here. I'm told that they will have valet parking at all three areas, which I think is fantastic. And I see as a planner the fact that there are any number of medical offices which will be closed in the immediate neighborhood and probably revert to homes. I see that something is going to be built. The trees will go down. This particular plan, we kept the wonderful stone wall. Hopefully, they will plant enough good-sized trees. And in this town, I'm on the tree conservancy. I know we will make sure that there will be plenty of trees. I think it's a huge asset. And for us to question whether or not it's going to help Greenwich, I think we must say thank you to the hospital for their planning and what they do and go ahead with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. The... The, um, again, you know how this happens to us with this and we're letting people speak as, um, the next speaker is Mary Jenkins and that should be the last one. Uh, there was someone by the last name of Freeman who had her hand up. I promoted her and she's gone. So, Ms. Jenkins, if you would go ahead.
Um, good evening. I hadn't planned to speak tonight either. But I just wanted to summarize very quickly my points, which are new points, since I was told at the briefing meeting yesterday that it had to be something new. I would second the motion about the construction noise concerns. Um, we live quite nearby and I understand we lived through the Greenwich Hospital renovation and Benheim. But it does impact the neighborhood and it most assuredly impacts the patients who are in the hospital as well. And I can't imagine that it's going to be the sort of thing that can be ignored as part of care of people who are ill. I am concerned about the construction congestion. I have no idea where heavy machinery is going to go unless it's all on the property and I assume it won't all be on the property. Um, there's not a lot of parking. There are only some small side streets like, uh, Glen Court, which unfortunately is, I guess, the nearest one. But the one thing I wanted to say with tremendous respect to the hospital, I'm a former RN. Uh, like Ms. Kelly is, uh, now a former RN because she's risen to the top of hospital administration and I admire that. But my concern is anticipating, if you will, the next application. And Madam Chair, I recognize that it's probably not entirely appropriate to comment other than on this application. But the nature of campus terrifies me. Because I can see that the cell tower of hospital, of Greenwich Hospital from my bedroom window. That's how close I live. So if this passes, um, and I understand the arguments in favor of the need for it. Um, I'm worried about the next application and the next. Um, if residential properties are going to be vulnerable, um, we're still in the most vulnerable for a campus area. So I would just ask that consideration be given to the fact that not only is this irreversible. I'm sorry, but it, was that me?
No, that's your warning bell. Go ahead.
All right, I'll talk faster.
No, no, you got a minute left.
All right. Uh, my, my point is basically that my concern is not only for this application, but for the, the fact that I anticipate there will be other applications by the hospital. Not only in Greenwich generally, because they will try to expand, but particularly in this neighborhood. Uh, it's already a dominating presence and I'm very concerned about this step and the next step. But the Planning and Zoning Commission has been very patient with the public. A somewhat angry public, understandably. And I just want to thank the commission and say that again, I admire the hospital's mission. But this is my neighborhood too, and I will stop talking now. Thank you.
You still have seven seconds, so I'll use them up for you.
I'll say thank you again.
Just so everybody knows, Ms. Jenkins, we are not being patient with the public. We are the public. That's why we're here. Um, we are everybody who's here. And the, and, and, you know, um, we could live on your street and it may be some of us do and some of us don't, but the issue is that we are you and we should be listening to everybody, both applicant and public. That's, that's what we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now I think we are done with the public comment at this point. Last call for public comment. Okay, there was a person who had their hand up, but they seemed to have disappeared. So with that, Ms. Kelly and Mr. Hegney, I turn it over to you. And if I, we, we may ask you a couple of questions. I don't know. Uh, but if you guys want to start, we might interrupt you and just get clarification on any points that you, that we want to know about.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was gonna ask, uh, Ms. Kelly to, uh, uh, make a few remarks and then I was going to close.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, I, I do apologize for ignoring your message for some reason. I didn't mean it.
I kept saying you were declining, declining. I was like, okay, she's burned out. We burned her out.
Not because I'm a forever, um, optimistic, hopeful person. And I will make one clarification is that I have to remind my family this all the time. I am still a registered nurse and I'm extremely proud of that. So I, I was laughing at that because that's just something about us nurses. We, we always get a little prickly when people think that we've, we've, we've given that up. So. But I do really want to thank the commission and I want to thank everyone involved. I recognize on everybody's part, the community, our neighbors and the commission that this has been a, um, it's been a very thorough process and it's an important process and I do appreciate process. I, I think it's very important. It's important for hospitals. It's important for communities. And I would like to just start with, I, I, um, you know, I am proud of the work that we do here at Greenwich Hospital and the Allen Haven Health System. Um, you may have seen a news release today that actually Spilow Cancer Center was actually named by, um, US News World Report for twenty twenty and twenty-one, the best hospital rankings. And that this Spilow Cancer Program is number one in the state of Connecticut. And it is the only one that is, is certified in this way. Um, it's, it's very important to us that it to be this recognition and be part of the number one cancer center, comprehensive cancer center in the state of Connecticut and have access to that. And this, this recognition, this national comprehensive cancer center recognition, there's only fifty-one in the, fifty-one of them in the nation. It's very robust and it requires multiple resources and multiple depth of the ability. And to the caller that mentioned that is not everyone can travel for that. So to have that here is important. But on that being said, I do understand that, and I haven't heard anyone objecting to providing best possible cancer care in Greenwich. Um, I, I hear loud and clear, nobody's having, no one is making that statement and I'm not hearing that statement and I want to say that publicly. What I'm hearing is the objection is to the location. And I under, I understand that and we've worked really hard to make the location more palpable so that we can be in coexist together. You know, we, we've made significant concessions to the building without wanting and without to this point. And we won't compromise in the mission of providing best possible care. So we, we have made, we have made the concessions where we've been able to make them. And they've been costly, but we've heard you and they've been important. Um, we've worked hard to improve on the building from, in the presence of the neighborhood. You know, the aesthetics. We also have been hearing, um, complaints. We know that, uh, multiple complaints. We've been talking about the noise. We've made changes in our processes. We've changed when we do testing. In fact, when the generating testing changed, we haven't, I don't have a documented complaint on noise in, since two thousand and early nineteen. So these, so we are responding. We, we're not perfect and we will continue to strive to be better. But I think it's important to know that we are listening and we were listening before this process. You know, again, these changes, uh, we've made in the design to be more attractive based on the feedback, the commission and the architect review committee. This building is more aesthetically pleasing than the current buildings in parking lots, which we would be replacing. In addition, we've committed to a formal ongoing process for both the hospital and the neighborhood to keep lines of communication open and find ways to mutually support being a positive member of the community. This will be facilitated again by the creation of a neighborhood advisory council. You know, as you heard from both one of our community members and our patients and our physician, location is important. The hospital's been here, as everyone had talked about, for over a hundred years. That is the sole reason why this is an important location. It, it is because of the proximity to the hospital. A significant part of being a comprehensive cancer care program is having access to phase one clinical trials to the thickest of our patients. This requires the ordering physician to be close by. Also, if the patient is not in the hospital, we have to have the fastest route for an emergency care in the event of a reaction. And I, and I heard comments about, you know, about satellites. Not all trials are equal. The trials that we're talking about, since some of the top scientists in their field, they're doing these first, first human, the first human trials. They have significant life-threatening reactions. And for some people, that is their only last viable option. So in summary, um, you know, as the president of Greenwich Hospital, I'm asking you to support our application to bring multiple programs that distinguish comprehensive cancer care as best in class to the residents of Greenwich. This will include multiple specialists that we have discussed in caring, such as lung cancer specialists, gynecological cancers, breast cancer, prostate, colorectal. We didn't choose those cancers, um, physician specialists arbitrarily. It was based on the reflection of what's going on in not only the community, but in the state of Connecticut. You had heard from one of our physicians last week that we, you know, we continue to have these numbers rise. Moreover, did you hear from one of our physicians, we also had been providing the data in these past couple of months about the rising rate of cancer. But at the very end, we were committed to providing the best possible care. And we also are committed to being a positive impact in our, the community we serve. We have no desire not to be a positive. So I, I would ask that you consider this application in a positive way. Um, we are committed to being good neighbors. I think we work hard to be good members of the community. And we do keep, one would talks about our community support. We keep Greenwich at the forefront because we know that is where our facility is. So thank you and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Kelly?
Someday you'll call me Diane, I hope.
Yo, you know, I, I explained that the last time when somebody said that. It, it's been a long battle to get it civil, oh, as much as we can at P and C. We really work on that. Um, so I've been calling Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney for you. You wouldn't believe how long. Uh, Mr. Hegney.
Madam, Madam Chair, I do actually, I'm just trying to do like a housekeeping thing. I can wait until Mr. Hegney's finished. It's, it's about the floor area of each of the buildings. So I can, I can wait. It's a technical thing. I'm just, I'm, I'm going back through my report and I'm just confused on something, but I can ask him after.
Why don't we ask him now? If you have some housekeeping, let's clean that up before Mr. Hegney closes his.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Hegney, I was just going back through the, um, the two thousand and two approvals for, uh, um, Helmsley and Watson. And now I seem to get, I, I don't know if there was like a change in how F A R was measured. But do you have, um, or could you just get it at some point this evening? The, um, the floor area of Helmsley, Watson, and I know what you're proposing here is a fifty, is a fifty-four thousand, but, um, I, I have, um, I have a hundred and fifty thousand plus for Watson and, um, five hundred and eight for all, for Helmsley and Watson, five hundred and eight thousand.
But the staff report says four hundred and ten thousand, doesn't it, Katie?
That, that was what I had asked our facility staff to provide us with, um, the total square footage of the hospital building itself. And they gave me the four hundred and ten thousand square foot number.
Yeah, cause this, the, that, that's what's getting confusing because the, the decision lives, and I don't know if there's been a cha, I'm trying to think if there was a change um, in how we've measured, because two thousand and two was where I was.
The Great Plains change would not affect them, I don't think. Nick, do you figure the Great Plains change would have affected them? No, so that would.
Cause that was, wasn't impacted commercial.
Yeah, so that would not have affected them. And I can't think of any other change we've made since I'm, I'm only going back to oh six, but that should be decent. I can't think of a change we've made that would have affected their calculation. So Kitty, you're showing the hospital is at five hundred and eight thousand square feet right now, not the four-ten.
Well, Helmsley and Watson are at five hundred and eight, four hundred and seventy-nine, based on the, the two thousand and two approval. But let me, but, but then my report said that was in two thousand and six. So let me just go back.
I, I did not go back to the prior approvals for Helmsley and Watson to look at the square footage numbers. I just asked the staff to give me that number. Um, so I, I'm, I'm glad it's not more.
Five hundred and nine thousand versus four-ten? I thought Ms. Kelly had the job of being the eternal optimist. Um, you better find those missing square feet. You got, you might have a lot of staff that's also AWOL. Um, and then, how much is Benheim?
That Benheim is, is about half the size of what we're proposing.
So it's somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand? No, you mean it's half the size.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, twenty-one. So we do know that Benheim is twenty-one. We do know that the proposal is fifty-four thousand. And, um, our question now, I, it, it's a little bit, so the proposal is fifty-four, eight, sixty-five. Um, one of the reasons Kitty was checking in with you is because I was doing some arithmetic on what that represented over your existing facilities. The increase over the hospital campus, et cetera, as you call it. And so, um, I started struggling with what the real numbers were this afternoon. So that's why Katie jumped in and, um, all right. So with that, if you get a chance, Mr. Hegney, while we're all talking, um, we'd love to know it. And if, um, you would like to go ahead and, uh, by the way, somebody's got me, no, okay. Uh, Mr. Hegney, if you would go ahead then.
Yeah, well, uh, what we've heard is a, a common theme from the neighbors is we support the hospital, but just don't put it here. And it, it's, uh, Diane has laid out why it's important to have it next to the hospital. But let's say that wasn't important. Where else would it go? And I look at areas where, uh, a fifty-four thousand square foot building could be built. And I look at West Plutnam Avenue and I see that you had a, uh, application earlier this year at five eighty-one West Plutnam Avenue. It has a office building and, um, I guess it's gone now, a, a nightclub. Uh, and there, uh, the proposal was for a four-story, forty-four unit apartment building. And you had thirty letters of opposition. Uh, the comments were, I quote, "Traffic is already entirely too heavy in this area. Building is too large, completely goes against what our community represents and has tried so hard to preserve." So here we are, that, that's a property on the post road, uh, on a state highway. Uh, it backs up to a residential neighborhood. But you had a great deal of opposition for that. So, uh, I, if, if it can't go here, where in town would it go? Are we looking at putting it in Porchester or Stanford? Uh, thi, this is the place it needs to go. It needs to go there for the clinical trials. It needs to go there for patient safety and, and treatment. And, uh, to think that it's going to go someplace else, uh, I, I think is, uh, is, is not realistic. Uh, I also want to say that when the commission looks at its, uh, its guiding principles, the, the first one is preserve community character. The hospital is part of that character. That, that's an integral part of our community. It's not just a block. It's our entire community that it is a part of and provides services that many people find attractive and move to the town because of that. And, uh, I, I think to, to say that, uh, there is that the existence of the hospital and preservation of community character are, are diametrically opposed. I don't think that's the case at all. I, I think that they are, uh, they are in sync. That you want to have a hospital like this. You want to have these kinds of facilities. And that does preserve and contribute, uh, to the community character. Um, the, uh, Dr. Hollister was very clear about why he thought it was very important to have this cancer center next to the hospital. Uh, and, and to maintain the, the forefront of treatment uh, and to provide residents with the best care possible, not, not just average care. And he said that to have people next to the hos, have patients next to the hospital is, is important. Uh, we've had, uh, one and a half years and ten hearings, counting the commissions and A R Cs. And we've made significant changes. Uh, we've scaled back the building considerably when we first came to you as a, as a pre-application matter. Uh, we had an 80,000 square foot building. We've scaled it back to 54,000. We've made significant changes to the architecture and landscaping from A R C's comments as well as the commission's comments, such as things like stepping back the, uh, the penthouse uh, to give it more of a one-story look on Lafayette Place. Uh, I, we haven't talked about it a lot, but I did want to touch on the rezoning and the, uh, the amendments to the regulations because that is something that you have to consider as part of this application. So when you look at the R M F, the role, the real, uh, residential multifamily, which the property is currently zoned as, and you look at the H2 zone, which is what we're proposing, uh, they're very similar zones. Uh, both permit, uh, four-story buildings, both have a maximum height of 40 feet. And both have the same FAR of point six. What we're proposing as part of this building is, uh, two stories with a penthouse. Uh, this building works with the topography of the site, uh, and, uh, has a larger, uh, first floor, uh, which is, uh, to a great extent underground. Uh, and that's what creates a much lower profile on Lafayette Place. Uh, and to make the building and the services more efficient, we have a slightly larger footprint. Uh, and so we're asking for an increase in the, uh, uh, in, in the overall building coverage, uh, from 35 to 45%. Uh, and we're asking for an increase in, uh, overall coverage, uh, from 75 to 80%. Uh, and that's really to not have to build a four-story building, which would not be nearly as efficient. And on the overall site coverage, uh, provide for fire access around the entire building. I would add that the healing garden, which is considered part of footprint and coverage, uh, is, uh, very much, uh, landscaped, uh, rather than a hardscape, which is of course, one of the, the concerns that the commission would have. Uh, and, uh, as you look at the site plan, uh, you really need to be focusing on the special permit standards and that's.
May I, may I just for a second, um, Mr. Hegney? I just want to come back. I'd like to ask you a question regarding the text, the text revision. Okay, so, uh, on the, on the text revision, you are proposing to go to 45% in the H2 zone. At present, the H2 zone, as everyone knows, is 35. There is no other business zone in town except for the H1 that has more than 30% maximum building area. So you are requesting that the hospital be given a particularly exclusive status in town of being allowed more building coverage. And again, except for CGBR, where there's front and rear building lines that existed at the time, et cetera. So let's just take that out, the front and rear building lines, because we all know that that's an exception. But in terms of building coverage, there is no other business zone in town that's over 30% except for, for the H1 zone. So where we're trending on this is that the hospital should be treated differently than other commercial uses. And I'd like you to respond very specifically to why the commission, what, why that should be something the commission considers.
Certainly, I, I think you did make that acknowledgement in adopting the H1 zone, which has the 50% building coverage and the 90% site coverage.
I'm going to get to site coverage in a sec. I'm doing building, doing building first, and then we're going to do site.
In order to provide the services that this cancer center will provide, we're looking to do it in, in an efficient manner. And that means not having a four-floor story building as is permitted, but having something, uh, that is more on one floor, uh, to provide for infusion on one floor and radiation on another floor. Uh, and we were looking at, uh, do we want to have, uh, uh, breast health on, uh, on the third floor? And we came back and said, no, we'll leave that and enhance it at, uh, at Benheim. Frankly, I, I think, uh, four floors is probably too much, uh, for these buildings in this zone. The commission may want to consider having just a three-story building.
Let me go back to the building, building coverage specifically, Mr. Hegney, because you're not asking us to change the four floors. The four floors is apparently existing. It's in 6205, but darn, I'm blessed if I can find it in 6113, but we'll skip that. 6205 has it, has the H2 at, at four floors. And you're not asking to change that. What you're asking to change is building coverage. And hospital would be the only use in town that is allowed a building coverage in excess of 30%. And you are making then an argument that the hospital should have treatment that no other use has. And you gave me the specific uses that you would have not, and why it works for you. Anybody else could tell me that, a car dealership could tell me that they need to have three bays or whatever it is, that that's what works for them. Why specifically should the hospital be allowed to have greater building coverage than any other commercial use?
And that's because of the particular specialized equipment that's involved, uh, particularly with the linear accelerators, which need to be buried in the ground and also.
But that's below your building, it's not your coverage.
Well, no, it becomes, it, it is part of the footprint of the building. And, and, um, and I, I think you also need to take into account that the healing garden is considered part of the building footprint, while it is very much a landscaped area and meant to be more park-like, uh, than, than pavement.
Okay, then we can go to site coverage. And I'm just asking you to answer these questions because as you know, we've been very focused on the site plan and the special permit and the needs for this and the consistency with the P O C D. The second part, of course, is this, is the lot coverage question. Here, in fact, there are, there is another use in town that is over 75% and that's the WB. The WB is over 75%, quite frankly, because it's always had that lot coverage. It's a historic lot coverage. It's basically been paved because it's been used for boat yards. So again, the hospital is asking for a lot coverage that is significantly in excess of any other lot coverage in town. Again, only the hospital has 90%. Everything else ranges from 60 to 75% except for the WB. Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, the, uh, currently the H2 zone allows for 75%. Uh, we're proposing 77.1% as part of this building.
And you're asking for, you're asking for a coverage to go to 80, however.
Right, I, I was rounding off. If the commission thinks that it should be 77%, that, that would be fine too. Uh, that works. Uh, there are a couple of things involved here. One is to provide for fire access around the entire building. And so we have a, a one-way driveway on the south side of the building, uh, to provide for that, which greatly increases our overall site coverage. And, uh, uh, we did not want to, uh, reduce parking on site. Although what we have found by doing specific analyses of who is going to be served in terms of visitors and patients at site at any given time, that we probably don't need the 118 spaces we have, that we have, uh, uh, at our peak, uh, projected at 84 patients and visitors at any, at one, any one peak time. So if, if the commission comes and says, we don't want to increase, uh, the, the coverage for this zone, I think we can comply with that. Uh, the, because of the nature of the design of the building itself, the, uh, and, and how the treatments are, are provided within it, uh, the, the building coverage, uh, number would be much harder. We'd have to increase the, the, the building and, and put another floor on it. Uh, but with the, uh, site coverage, uh, we could reduce, uh, a few parking spaces, uh, and, and meet that.
Not so sure, we want you to do that. You're already tight for parking on site. This is, this is a, but let's get to the parking. I, I want to get to the, if, since you touched on it, I am gonna, I, I would just like to mention, Mr. Hegney, as you're talking about that, uh, one of the speakers did comment that there were some, some, there, there was something from Alexandra Mock and dated May. Uh, Redness and Meade sent the answers in August 9th. I've got the letter in front of me and it pertains to the stormwater management. And, um, the, uh, objective 4.4 of the Plan of Conservation and Development, 4.4A, which is in the environmental section and specifically is addressing stormwater, groundwater quality and quantity. Its first objective in this section is for us to advocate for a reduction of site coverage. So in this case, um, you know, we've been working a lot on the size of the building and all along. But as I reread the P O C D over the weekend, I wanted to highlight this to you because I wanted to give you, this is not a point I've made to you before. And I wanted to make a point of raising this with you and allowing you to give a full response that the P O C D does advocate for a reduction in site coverage. As one of its objectives.
And, and, and that's a, a notable goal. Uh, I think that the concern that was expressed in the conservation comments, uh, was on, uh, water treatment and water quality. Uh, and that's why I had, uh, Redness and Meade, Dave Ginter, our, our civil engineer, uh, respond as to how and why it was designed the way it is, uh, given the site and given, uh, the, uh, the treatment that's necessary, uh, for, uh, any runoff which would come from here. The, uh, in, in terms of overall site coverage, as I said, uh, we could reduce parking and meet that requirement. Uh, and I also, as have pointed out, that the healing garden, while technically considered coverage, both building and site, uh, is very much landscaped and does provide its own, uh, water quality treatment, uh, as a result of that.
I, I, just on the parking, um, the trade-off is of course, that the Smilo itself has, um, is tight for parking. And, uh, we have discussed that several times. And on that parking question, as we discussed it, um, the issue is that you will have to use valet and parking apps to balance that overall, uh, across the, the buildings, you have enough parking, but you will have to use the, the apps and valet. And to the extent that Smilo is already tight, uh, I, we would be concerned about you reducing parking. I would be concerned. I should not speak for the commission. I have that bad habit. So, um, the, uh, I, I know you're trying to wrap, but one of the things that I'd like you to touch on as you wrap up is objective 1.2G of the P O C D, uh, specifies that we should prevent commercial impacts and activities from encroaching on residential zones. As you close, would you also cover, um, the fact that this is a commercial activity? Um, that this is a, a multifamily and office use that has been in this? And if just you would include that in your closing comments and I'll stop asking your questions now.
That, that's quite all right. If, I, I want to know that we're responding to the questions and issues that you have. So please, you know, keep your cards and letters coming.
It's a big time for me to interrupt and just, uh, make a comment. Getting into the, the neighborhood. I've discussed it. This before, but, uh, of the, the, the idea of providing some kind of space of relief for the neighborhood and, and, and the idea of setting back the building from the circle and from Lafayette, uh, and using, and then shifting the building over and into the, uh, the Lake Street side of the property a bit, uh, could possibly go a long way into creating a feeling of, of offering something to the neighborhood where you're creating a little, some open space that may, uh, could, could possibly be, um, uh, shared with the community. Um, and, uh, and, and, uh, by shifting the building further into the interior of the, of the block, uh, reduce the impact on the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering if you had any thoughts on that?
Uh, I, I did, and, and that was a, a comment and question that came up, uh, not only with the commission, but over the three meetings that we had with the Architecture Review Committee. Uh, they were concerned about its, uh, impact on Lafayette and on the corner. Uh, and we took a number of steps. We reduced the size of the penthouse. Uh, we stepped it back so that, uh, from a sightline standpoint, you would not be seeing the, the penthouse from, uh, uh, from Lafayette, uh, nor from Lake Avenue, uh, on the sidewalk and, and driving by on the street. Uh, that those, those were important considerations. Uh, the, the ele, the, the first floor elevation, uh, even up to the penthouse on the Lafayette side is only 23 feet. So, uh, you're having a much lower profile.
Hold on a second, Mr. Hegney. Mr. Bazili may not be able to hear you again. Mr. Bazili, would you go ahead?
No, I just have no idea who asked that question.
Um, the question was asked by Peter Levy.
Oh, was, oh, I had him as mute, muted on my screen. Okay.
Yeah, um, I, he, he, he apparently, he was on with two screens. Um, and he's muted at the moment, but that was Mr. Levy. His face fro, his screen is freezing, so it was hard to tell. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney, I'm sorry.
So, uh, we were very cognizant of wanting to maintain a lower profile. Also to reduce the overall, uh, grading at that point. There was a stone wall that was proposed along Lafayette, uh, that we have removed except for retaining the, uh, the, uh, the older stone wall that runs along the corner and down, uh, Lake Avenue. Uh, we actually had a, a, an application with, or a request with the Public Works Department for an easement to construct a wall over the town right of way in a very small area. Uh, we've, we no longer have that need, uh, because that wall has been removed. And it makes the site much more open and more welcoming to the public than it had been. And that was part of the discussion we've had with the commission over the last several meetings. Uh, the landscaping along there was also changed, uh, so that it was softened and, uh, and rounded, uh, over near the, and more, uh, green space added, uh, along the, uh, uh, the service entrance on, uh, on the Lafayette side. And along, uh, uh, Lake Avenue, uh, again, the, uh, penthouse has been set back farther, uh, so that you don't have that three-story look. You just have a two-story look as you go along, uh, Lake Avenue. And, uh, there's been significant changes in the, uh, architecture uh, to, uh, not have it so horizontal in terms of its appearance, but provide some, uh, vertical elements. Uh, and the other part of that is to continue that wall, uh, along Lake Avenue, uh, at a, at not a, a high elev, uh, not a, a large height, uh, so that you can feel the openness of the site there, uh, that has been, uh, designed, um, along the Lake Avenue side of the building. So, uh, I, I think that, uh, although the building itself, for the most part, has not moved back, moving portions of it back, uh, and modifying the grading and the landscaping, uh, I think has, uh, gone a long way to accomplish, uh, the issue that you raised, uh, earlier in, in some of the meetings, uh, as to how it affects, uh, uh, the traffic circle at Lafayette and, and Perry Ridge and along Lafayette, uh, place itself.
Well, thank you for that. I, I do agree that those, that those moves are significant. They, they, um, are important. But, uh, my, my additional thought was that, um, if if there is, you've created some landscaping, which is more like a buffer instead of something that can engage somebody walking. So let's let's say if we're grass, we could actually walk on it and enjoy it or something. You could actually move into the space. And that's a way of kind of receiving the the community just as a thought, as a way of thinking about the property and how it fits into how that people walking by. But what you've done, I agree with you.
So our landscape architect, Bob Goldie, has also provided an area where there could be a bench on the property for the neighborhood to use. And that whole corner, the landscaping has been reduced corner of the building where the Healing Garden is, is has been moved back so that you do have a more open and welcoming and not looming effect that may have existed previously. So those were very much in response to the comments that you had made earlier in our hearings.
Yes. Go on with your closing statement.
One of the big issues that the neighborhood has talked about and that we have spent a lot of time studying is traffic and parking. And that's why we came back with the sensitivity study that Mr. Adware put together, which was is very specific to how this building will operate. And it shows that you're you're much less in terms of a peak activity in particular with this building versus a medical office. At the medical office, the turnover rate is much greater. You have people coming in and out on a much more frequent basis. Here, the treatments are going to be longer. And so you're not having that same kind of of turnover. You're not having as many people coming in based on the square footage as you would expect in a medical office building. So that that we thought that that was an important study to to share with you because we think it shows actually how this building will operate. Your own traffic engineer and consultant, rather, Beta, has looked at this and a number of recommendations. One was to make sure that you show that there's a counterclockwise circulation on the on the surface parking. And so we've amended the plan to provide for that and how the valet and the garage would operate. So we've amended it to address that too. I I believe with that, one of the neighbors said we should have an independent review of the traffic study. You do that on a regular basis and and you hire a very competent and and well-respected professional engineering firm in Beta and have a traffic engineer do a review and and the suggestions and oftentimes those suggestions are incorporated into the plan. So in terms of your special permit factors that you look at.
Yeah, but before you go into the special permit factors, I'd like to back you up for a second. You have consistently referred to that you know that two of our decisions are going to be rooted in consistency with the P O C D. Both the zone change and the text amendment have to be consistent with the P O C D. And I'd like you to add any other comments that you would like at this time in reference to the P O C D and that consistency. And then you can go on to the site plan considerations along with the special for the six fifteen and six seventeen considerations, if you would, site plan and special permit.
Yes, in the P O C D in in Section Six, the and I would add that this P O C D is the first time that the commission has adopted one that referred to the importance of having medical care in town. Something that you focused on and that was not something new that was included that hadn't been included before. And on page one sixteen of the Plan of Conservation Development, commission acknowledges that the hospital has become affiliated with Yale New Haven health system in order to stay competitive in a changing healthcare market. Subsequently, Greenwich became a regional teaching hospital and allied with Yale University School of Medicine, representing all medical specialties. The hospital is committed to expanding services that are important to Greenwich residents. Recent examples include providing pediatric emergency room physician and expanding cardiology services. And goes on, however, according to the hospital, forty percent of Greenwich residents seek their healthcare in other places, primarily New York City, to pursue services that are not provided and not deemed sufficiently local. In response to resident demand, the hospital is focused on improvements to the physical plant, outpatient licensed facilities such as Benheim Cancer Center and off-campus medical offices at locations such as five hundred West Plutnam Avenue.
And if I could, Mr. Hegney, if I could emphasize a question we've asked you repeatedly, the hospital is committed to expanding services that are important to Greenwich. And we've been given the numbers that we you anticipate somewhere between sixty and seventy percent of the users of the Smilo Center to be non-Grenwich residents. Would you comment again, for the record, why you believe that this provides an important service, a service that is important to Greenwich?
Diane has on a number of occasions explained that community comp- the community hospital needs to have a certain core of of residents in order to be able to survive. She's also said that four hundred Greenwich residents will develop cancer on an annual basis. And right now, it's only twenty percent of them that are being served by Greenwich Hospital. The goal is to increase that significantly so that residents in town will be able to receive services in those specific cancers which the hospital has identified as ones which are increasing in our neighborhood as we all age. And and they're important so that you're not spending two hours going up to Yale or however long it takes to get into Slum Kettering in New York. That this would provide the the really top-notch premium care that Yale provides in New Haven here in Greenwich. And that's a great benefit to to Greenwich residents. Will other people from other communities be served? Absolutely. That's necessary in order for the hospital, frankly, to exist. But the focus is on what types of treatments do Greenwich residents need? And what types of cancers do we anticipate in our community? And that's the focus. I should also add that cardiology, as was said in the in the Plan of Conservation Development, is one that is all that that service has already been developed. So the hospital has taken that step. And it's in the future, all of us, half of us are going to deal with heart problems and half of us are going to have to deal with cancer problems. And so those are the two things that the hospital is focused on. Cardiology, they've already accomplished, and this is part of the second part of being able to provide cancer care.
Okay, last question for you. I've repeatedly voiced concern about the campus, about the campus.
Yes.
About it if and on word that I would replace campus with would be becoming a medical center as opposed to a hospital. I I touched on the amount of square foot growth. What's been added, the second pavilion, then Bendheim, now Smilo. And the buildings continued have continued to go on. So it has evolved over time to where it is becoming more of a center by adding the, you know, you have the Bendheim Center and now you have Smilo Center. Would you comment on that, please, Mr. Hegney?
I think Diane had mentioned it's important to have these services in one place. So they have the synergy of hospital resources, the doctors and and being able to serve the patients all in one place. For those types of services, the outpatient rehabilitation, other types of of treatments, those can be done elsewhere. And the hospital does do them elsewhere. Five hundred West Plutnam is now a significant portion of the services that the hospital offers, particularly in cardiology. So looking at can other services be provided elsewhere? Yes, mu- much of the outpatient was moved over to five hundred West Plutnam so that we could have private rooms for all the patients. And so that that was something that the commission saw just a few years ago. So we're looking at what services can be provided elsewhere and doing that. And those that need to be adjacent to the hospital are are provided there. Diane, do you have anything more you want to add in that regard?
I was impressed at how much you were doing. No, you said it well.
And I'm truly done with my questions now. I just wanted to make sure that every concern that I've been raising and I is there any concern a commissioner wishes to raise at this time? That they wish to discuss with Mr. Hegney or can we finally let him close?
You can close.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney. I'll shut up now.
As you consider the special permit standards, we're improving the traffic circle, which improves pedestrian safety. We're eliminating curb cuts, which is another concern you have in looking at special permit standards. From an aesthetic standpoint, the wires that are running across Lake Avenue and Lafayette Place, those will all go away. The the blasting is is a concern that was expressed this evening and that had been expressed previously. That certainly would be a condition of your approval that we hire a seismic company that would provide for not only initially planning out how the blasting would be done, but would provide a monitoring during any blasting. And that that has been successfully done. We went through that with the Branch Reform Synagogue where there was a concern about impacting the neighborhood in a residential neighborhood. And we were very successful in monitoring that through the the construction. I I just want to close by saying that this is a significant improvement Greenwich residents not have to spend time on the highway going to Yale New Haven. And since this is something that all or most of us are going to have to deal with, it's important to do this now as our as our town continues to age. And we would ask that you approve this. We believe we have addressed all the issues that have come up and and that this has been a constructive dialogue and collaborative effort that we have used to get to the point where we have something that we think will be very positive for our town.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hegney. No further questions from the commission? I propose that we close this item. Please raise your hand if you are if you object to this item being closed. There being no objection, this this and we're going to close all three of the applications at the same time. We will vote them separately. Again, there are three applications from Greenwich Hospital. One is for a rezone, another one is for the text amendment, and the third one is for the site plan and special permit. All three then, if since there is no objection, are now closed. The next thing is, does anybody object to deciding these three applications at this time? Please raise your hand if you object to deciding these applications. Okay, in that case, we will begin with the decision process. And the first application that we will begin is and I'm just going to lay out the process for you once again, because I know we have a lot of people in the public. I will ask you for a motion. I will ask for a second for the motion and then we will discuss the motion. And after the discussion on the motion, we will close the discussion and we will take a vote. So at this time, I would like to take a motion on the zone on the revision. Hold on a second. This that we're we've got the zoning text amendment first. And then the zoning map amendment, I would rather take the zoning map amendment first. Is that okay? For me to do, Katie? Okay, I would like to begin with the rezoning because
Excuse, excuse me.
I was just going to say, Mr. Basili, I think we should keep you on. If that's all right.
You're stuck with us, Mr. Basili. I know we're not super interesting, but you're stuck with us. I hope there's nothing on the six thirty news that you're going to miss. Okay, so we are going to do the zoning map amendment first. And that is to rezone the properties located at sixteen thirty eight Lake Avenue and fifty four sixty four Lafayette Place, which is eight parcels from the R M F zone to the H two zone. And I would take a motion, please.
Greenwich Hospital, application P L P Z twenty twenty one zero one zero two for a zoning map amendment. The rezone properties located at one Hold on. Okay, applicant seeks to a zoning map amendment to rezone properties at sixteen to thirty eight Lake Avenue and fifty four to sixty four Lafayette Place. Eight parcels from the R M F zone to the H two zone for Section six twenty two of the Town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. The commission finds the proposed zoning map amendment
Nick, you're coming in and out.
Is that better? That's quite all right. That's quite all right. The proposed zoning map amendment is keeping with the guiding principle six of the two thousand nineteen P O C D, specifically Objective six point four A supports efforts of emergency services departments. Please fire ambulance, Greenwich Hospital and local healthcare organizations to provide top services to Greenwich residents. Therefore, motion to approve the application for zoning map amendment as proposed.
Mr. Levy has seconded. The application to rezone these properties from R M F to H two zone has been moved and seconded. We will now discuss the application. Who would like to start the discussion? Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I guess a couple of procedural questions. Are we limited to three minutes?
No, you could talk as long as you like.
No, I think this is a huge issue and I I'm not going to talk forever. I'm just going to hit a couple of points on the zoning. But my second question is, if the zoning application fails, do we move on to the other applications?
Regardless, we are going to do motions on all three applications. Regardless of what happens with any one of them, we are doing motions on all three applications. This is significant enough that I'd like to be very sure that the applicant knows where we stand on each thing.
Well, let's start with the zoning because that's what we do. And almost all the discussion has been on the site. Everybody agrees that Greenwich Hospital is is a benefit to the community. I haven't heard anybody disagree with providing the services. Many people have disagreed on this particular building in this site. And unfortunately, when you go on and on and on and talk about the site, it tends to cloud what the zoning issue is. The zoning issue is driven by the P O C D. Madam Chair, you've mentioned that. If I think everybody on this commission knows that the two thousand nineteen P O C D changed the emphasis, the strategic view of the commission. And it moved the commission, and I'll I'll read this for the record, into a mission statement that says to preserve Greenwich as the premier residential community by by enhancing our exceptional neighborhoods, schools, environment, and culture, et cetera. That is a change from prior POCDs, and I want to emphasize this. By saying that, we're giving what we believe the view of the town is. By the way, this was passed by the RTM. Thank you very much, Katie. By a vote 148 to 24, which I'm told is like an overwhelming positive reaction. And we had all those meetings, thousands and thousands of hours writing this. And what we're saying is, for the first time, that residential community is the number one priority in the POCD and the number one priority in setting regulations. By the way, that's radically different. The last POCD, 2009, talked about controlling development. The one before that talked about the environment. You have to go back into the 60s. The POCD said, oh, we're missing commercial development, so they emphasize commercial development. So my point is that we changed in emphasizing residential and residential development. And this commission has gone out of its way in the last couple of years to encourage that. We've we've helped approve applications from office owners to convert to residential. We've helped many other people look at ways to develop more residential. We're big time now into the affordable housing, which is residential. Multifamily is residential, by the way. I think the definition that this area is mixed use is at best confusing, let's put it that way. So I think the commissions need to look at the POCD. It's pretty clear where we're going. And I guess the last point of the POCD is there is a bright line somewhere. We keep saying we don't want commercial to encroach, which this is doing, on residential. This is several blocks off the Post Road. We've had issues with encroachment on the Post Road. This is several blocks away. It has been encroaching. And let me go to the second, or I've got three issues. The second issue is the neighborhood. I lived in this neighborhood for 15 years on Perry Ridge Road. I organized an association to fight the hospital the last time. There was no goodwill here. It was not, it was very contentious. Luckily, at the end of the day, the hospital stopped the development, stopped buying down the properties, did do the right landscaping, backed off the building, but it was only after a very contentious series of meetings. Unfortunately, the hospital has got this history and now, you know, the fact is that that hospital was proposed because they wanted more services and they needed a bigger building. They got it. But this now has moved on. We now have all these satellite locations, which by the way is the second point. The hospital has changed the zoning here and and the way they're operating. They've gone to satellite. 500 West Putnam is a great example of what can be done by taking this sort of a cancer center off this site of the neighborhood. And it's not alone. There's multiple examples of this at this point. So the whole model here has changed. And I believe that all this discussion about the benefits to Greenwich, I absolutely agree, but we don't lose any of those by not approving this zone initially and the site plan later on. We gain all that. There's no loss. As far as I can figure out, other than a few people having to walk or get in their car, it's going to be the same thing in terms of the benefits to the Greenwich residents, which by the way, sidebar, I apologize, but I got to get a point in. What we asked the hospital, we interviewed the hospital three years ago for the POCD, right, Katie? You were with me? We said, listen, we need to understand where you're going. What what's the Greenwich health profile? What do we need in Greenwich? We never got that. But we we got a line in the POCD that I remember well because I wrote it and put it in in item six. That's item six. That's after one, two, three, four, and five. And there is a priority here that we want to study this. It's never been studied. I have a I have a concern that this might be something that the residents definitely benefit from, but there could be a lot of other things that the hospital could help the town with, and it's never been explored. There's a lot better data around now than there used to be, so I'd love to come back to that at this point in time. And I think I'll just stop there. We're on zoning now, not on the site.
Just do the zoning, only the zone change. And you can't refer to any other decision when you're in the discussion mode for this. You're only talking about the motion before you, which is to change the zone from RMF to H2. That's all you can discuss.
That's a direct conflict to the POCD. At some point, you have to make a statement. I think in the past, our town fathers have made statements by restricting and saying no, and that's why we've got the town we have. I think this would be a violation of the major point that we've been making in the 2019 POCD on at that point.
Alrighty. Okay, so does anybody else want to comment and discuss?
Yes, I'll comment. Looking at the POCD and the proposal in front of us. We have a town of 60,000 residents and we have a world-class hospital right here in our backyard that I think a lot of us take for granted. And we try to really find, you know, what is the true balance of applications before us? And I think actually this one's been very particularly very difficult, but you know, the guiding principle number one is preserve the sense of character and sense of place specifically, and I'm reading this right from the right from the POCD. Community character refers to distinct identity, sense of place. It's the impression made by a neighborhood or a town's natural setting, history, assets, social activities, cultural artistic offerings. It's more than just the visual identity. It's also how people interact with both the man-made and natural environment. I think that when you're talking about an asset, this is an asset for the town of Greenwich. And understanding that the hospital and its neighborhood grew up together. They were always there together. Matter of fact, actually, the hospital predates some of the buildings that are around it. Now, when you take a look at guiding principle number six and what that tells us, or you know, what how that's informing us, you know, it's those things of providing Greenwich with the best possible infrastructure, municipal facilities, cultural institutions, and health services. And this is one of those things. It's the best possible health service that we can we can we can have in Greenwich. And I I think it actually fits in with both. There have been changes to the building that make it fit. I think actually the hospital has gone out of its way to understand its position in the neighborhood and that it's not seeking to destroy the neighborhood. It's seeking to fit in the neighborhood. I think actually looking at understanding of the zoning of this, the predicate, just nuts and bolts. The H2 and both the RMF are four stories, 30, you know, 40 feet in height. And this one's 39. The RMF and the H2 permits a floor ratio, floor ratio of six, right? The permitted is 56,000 and this one is actually 54. Okay. And it's interesting because actually, I think if somebody came in, and I think this is actually in their staff report, if a multifamily development was considered for this, that included a below-market rate component. Okay, then 9,400, 94,000 square foot property could support 39 houses, 39 housing units. Okay, that's 39 apartments in four stories. So I really think that actually we found the balance here. I found the balance here that this building and its use.
Not the building, not the building or its use. That's in the site plan. You can only comment.
Fits in with what's going on here.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. MacRae.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You can only comment on the zone change. The building does not exist in the zone change. Sorry.
The zone change, the zone change is appropriate for this area. And that the balance that it's creating is is here. And we we can see that. Yeah, oh, yeah, they can build it someplace else. They can do this someplace else. But do they have to? I mean, they own the property. And is it going to be an expansion of their of their uses? Are they going to have a campus-like thing? They'll always have to come back to us, no matter what, for us to look at what's going on. And again, we need to strike that balance. So I think we're we're I'm in a good position on this with looking at these two and have found that balance. Okay?
Okay, just the one. We're only talking about the zone change. Sorry to keep rubbing it in, but we have to keep it separate. So you're in a good position?
I have a question.
No, Mr. Low, you can't speak right now. I'm sorry. The item is closed.
That was my question. That was my question. Just confirming. Thank you.
Yeah, I gave you lots of chances. Sorry, Ms. Goss, if you.
Yes, Mr. MacRae, you're you're in a good position and could you just repeat your final position, your final statement?
I think that when looking at this this zone change, just the zone change.
From RMF to H2?
As I said, RMF and H2 is the same thing. It's the same nuts and bolts of zoning. I think actually, as I said before, if you had the 94,000 square foot piece of property, you could get 39 housing units. And who would know, who would know what, you know, kind of generation of traffic that would be or what that would look like on a site? So I think we're looking at something that's actually okay and that we can move on this in a positive way.
Thank you, Mr. MacRae. Ms. Goss, did you have a comment since you started speaking?
I had a question. Oh, comment about the, well, I.
Just anything on the discussion that you'd like to add?
I think we're balancing two POCD goals, both of which are admirable. The goal number one, to preserve the community characteristics and sense of place, and goal six, to provide the best quality health services. And objective 1.2 on page 38 of the POCD in its first paragraph states, the objective is reviewing zoning regulations to further protect and expand community character. I haven't seen any arguments saying any statements. I've heard a lot of statements about harm to the community, but I haven't seen any letters or statements saying that the hospital will expand community character. And then there's, as Ms. Alvin mentioned earlier, the specific objective listed in item 1.2 of this first guiding principle is to prevent commercial impacts and activities from encroaching on residential zones. If the zone change sought would convert a residential zone, a multifamily zone, to H2 zone, this is an encroachment on a residential zone, both the RMF and the R6 zones that are on Williams Street, due to issues such as noise dealing with the hospital and with the safety. And the hospital's been in this area since 2017, so one could say, well, the residents knew about the hospital when they moved in, so well, they moved into the nuisance. But when they moved in, it was they moved into a designated residential zone and they did not move in knowing that the hospital would request expanding the changing zones and changing the part of the RMF zone to a H2 zone. And even with the Neighborhood Advisory Council, which is quite admirable for the hospital to propose, the there will still be adverse effects in the residential quality of life of life in the area. And on the other grid, the hospital does have alternatives. The hospital is in use group four, and this use is allowed. It may be difficult admittedly, but this use is allowed in at least four other zones in Greenwich. And the the hospital claims that the center must be within, the Smilo Center needs to be within walking distance of the current hospital, and I'm not convinced by that argument. And while the P and Z, while we have allowed schools to expand in residential areas, the needs of the schools with hundreds of young children and teenagers who share the facilities, teachers, and athletics, athletic buildings are quite different from the needs of a hospital.
Ms. Goss, you said 2017, just just since we're recording, you mean 1917?
Thank you, yeah.
I know what you meant, but since we have Mr. Basili here now.
Thank you.
Mr. Levy, would you like to add to the discussion?
It's a very good discussion. The 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 choice of words is significant here. I don't think of it as an encroachment. I do think that the hospital has a very strong idea about what is good for them and a very admirable one. They have proved themselves to be a very respectable institution. And I, as a resident of the town, trust their judgment that they know what it is that they need. And I don't question that at all. And the community is, one second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Levy, you just went silent.
Yes, I am sorry. I think that the the neighborhood is a is a very is something that is a important aspect of the character of this area. And that's that's fine balance, I think, is is respectfully responded to in a few ways. There's always more they could do, I think, as I commented, I think they could make more of a one second. They could offer a little bit more to to the community and perhaps in the way of creating some open space for the neighborhood. But that's that's the for them to decide. I do believe that the the request for the zoning change certainly makes sense because they have a program and the program is a very auspicious and a good one that that will benefit the area and and the community of Greenwich. I think that the opportunity to to expand and grow in the neighborhood is a worthy goal. And hopefully, you know, this project, if it goes forward, will have all of the great benefits that they said will and will be successful. And if it's successful, I think that in turn that it will help, it will be good for the neighborhood because the neighborhood is there and they they need to keep on talking to them and responding to them. So I encourage that. But I I do feel that the zoning change does make sense at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to add my thoughts and we seem to be a bit divided. And I'm going to throw in my thoughts and see if they carry some weight. When we talk about guiding principle number one, we talk about the importance of Greenwich's character, community, and sense of place that they cannot be overstated, that these components are essential to the town's identity and are at the core of planning and policy. We don't mean to not permit change, but we do mean to protect neighborhoods. And I give you that in spite of the lack of clarity about the total square feet that the hospital has at this moment and will have after they've built Smilo. If you had bought a house in that neighborhood 25 years ago, the hospital will have quadrupled in size since you moved there. So when you say that the neighborhood has grown with the hospital, I would argue back to you guys that no, it has not. The hospital has almost quadrupled. Today, we believe it is around 525,000 feet. You add the 54,000 and change, you get to close to 600,000 square feet. I believe that 25 years ago, it was in the 150,000 square foot range. A neighbor, a resident would not have expected that. And I've repeatedly raised this concern that the hospital has gone from a hospital building to what is turning into a campus. Repeatedly had that concern that we are becoming a Repeatedly had that concern that we are becoming a campus, that that's not what the P O C D aims to do in terms of neighborhood. And that you are changing the characteristics of this neighborhood by having the hospital become essentially a medical center with a very specialized, two specialized cancer treatment areas, buildings totaling almost 80,000 square feet. That's on the one side, that I do believe it affects character. I believe that, as Mr. Yaski pointed out, in the sequence of the P O C D, we made the first objective, the most important one, which is to protect our neighbors and their neighborhoods. And I ask you how you would respond to having moved in at 150,000 square feet and be looking at something that has quadrupled? Now I give you the other side. I did begin this application process by wanting very much for us to have specialized cancer care. Like all of you, I've lost someone I love dearly more than one person to cancer. I wanted them not to have to travel. My dearest friend was treated at Greenwich Hospital. But I know that many are not treated and we, we do care about other people that we've lost that were not able to have treatment at the hospital. I've also volunteered in oncology at Greenwich Hospital. So I care deeply about the availability of healthcare and what we can do. But at the end of the day, I believe that our first job here is to apply the P O C D. Regardless of my own personal feelings about cancer care, I have to step back and look at the P O C D. And we made that the first priority to protect the neighborhood. And this neighborhood is being, I believe, overwhelmed because it's not going to stop here. They own more buildings, it can continue to grow. I don't think we want a regional medical center. I think we should hold off on increasing the hospital zone. And I, I feel badly about saying that because I'm applying what we put into the P O C D. My heart, to some extent, does rebel. It wants to have people who are ill get the top treatment. But on the other hand, I have to obey the P O C D and it just doesn't say what is being proposed. So that's where I am. I don't know if that influences you in any or changes any views? If you want to discuss it some more or if you would like to take it to a vote? Mr. Yaski, would you go ahead?
With you, I started this application very interested in expanding healthcare in Greenwich. We all did, I think. The point you just made, though, I keep coming back, and this is where the conversation, I believe, gets confused. All those benefits that you would like for a Greenwich resident could still happen in Greenwich at a different site. And I don't know why everybody wants to, this is similar to other applications we had where we talk about the need, the needs there, the services are there, but they can easily be had. There was a point made by someone that this is all NIMBY and I just disagree with that. There are many locations in Greenwich that this site, and, and its sister site is already at 500 West. So I, I just don't count that as part of a bad thing in, in rejecting the zoning. I, I think it gets back, as you said, to our emphasis on residential and guiding the town for, we say 10 years in the P O C D, but it is, like Nick said, it's 40 years. I would rather have a 39-unit residential apartment, which, by the way, we have down the street at the Lodge in Lafayette, than a three and a half story medical office or medical cancer center. I think they're radically different, they're not the same. So that just adds on. I, I, it's frustrating to hear people keep saying, we're going to lose these benefits. We're not losing anything.
Madam Chair, Mr. Levy seemed to have left right during Mr. Yaski's comment. May I paraphrase what you just said, Mr. Yaski, which is, Mr. Levy, can you hear me?
I'm trying to add him back in. I, I have him just as an audio only right now.
Okay, I, I assume you can hear, but Mr. Yaski was essentially saying that this, this facility could go elsewhere and that would be a positive thing in the community. It is not a NIMBY thing, it really is about what's the right use for this particular area. And that, that he does not believe that expanding the hospital is the right use for this particular spot. But that doesn't mean that the cancer center is not welcome in the community per se, just not in this location, is that fair?
Yeah, but I also added, there was a point made that we could get a 39-unit residential apartment building here. And I would love to see that as opposed to what is being proposed at this point in time. I, I think it's residential. I don't understand where people begin to define multifamily as non-residential. I, I don't understand that at all.
It's a building code thing.
Yeah, well, if we make decisions on technicalities and language, we're making a mistake. I, we have to honor it, but I've been in the real estate business most of my life. Multifamily is residential, it is not commercial.
Yeah, unfortunately, for the building code, it gets treated as commercial. And so I think Mr. Hegney was the one who got his signals crossed on that. Mr. Levy, would you confirm that you can hear us?
Star six to unmute. Or star, I'm sorry, star nine. No, star nine, raise your hand, star six to unmute.
Well, it depends because if you're on your iPhone, you don't even have to do that. You just unmute yourself, just like regular. Mr. Levy, would you confirm that you can hear us? We can see that you're here. Mr. Levy?
There's a second device now with his name that I'm trying to bring in, Madam Chair.
Okay. Maybe show me where it is, well, you just do it by yourself.
It was there, now it's gone again.
Okay, we're going to have to wait till he comes back in, right? We can't change the seating at this point, right? Katie, could you try calling Mr. Levy and see if you can get ahold of him? On his, or I'll call him, or do you want to do it?
You do it if you don't mind, just because my signal's terrible down here.
Madam Chair, I think we have him now.
At least I remembered to mute myself while I yelled at him.
I'm in.
All right, Mr. Levy, good. Okay, now Dennis, for the third time, I believe missed, the only thing Mr. Levy missed was the comment that Mr. Yaski made. So Mr. Yaski, would you please repeat it for the third time? And then Mr. Levy can confirm that he heard it.
Okay, I made a couple of comments. Give me a reminder what you think he didn't hear.
Everything, everything.
Basically, that, that Smilo is, is, it's just wrong in this location, but it's welcome in the community and potentially somewhere else. It's not a NIMBY thing.
Okay, I'm up. Peter, what I was saying was that we keep somehow believing that if we don't approve the zone, that Smilo will, will disappear and the benefits to Greenwich residents will disappear. That's totally untrue. All the benefits that are talked about can be had by Greenwich residents in many other locations in town with significant, almost no difference other than maybe a couple of doctors having to get in a car and drive somewhere, which happens all the time. So there's this persistent thing and even we are falling into the trap of believing somehow if we reject this, this zone, that we lose all these wonderful benefits. It's not true. In fact, what I'm hoping the hospital does regardless is work with us to identify future healthcare needs of the residents of Greenwich. And in an analytical, comprehensive study, which is what we'd asked them to do several years ago, and they said they had a lot of data, we, we got very little of that. That's a sidebar, but I think there's a lot we could work with the hospital on, on other locations. And that's number one. And there was another, oh, the other point I made, which is really important, these are not the same zones, the multifamily today and the H2. They produce radically different buildings. One produces this cancer center with all of its institutional qualities and traffic issues, which I absolutely agree with. The other one might produce an apartment building. And Nick calculated 39 units, I don't know whether that's true, but quite frankly, that's what we already have. The Lodge is like that, Lafayette is like that. So that would fit the neighborhood, it's residential. I, I am ignoring our building code definition of multifamily as commercial because that's simply not the case in, in a neighborhood, so.
It's just for the code.
Just for the code, but, but it's used a lot. You know, words are important and we've had a lot of words that I think are somewhat confusing and I wanted to clarify those two cases.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Levy. You're breaking up, Mr. Levy.
Very, very good point. Station, do you hear me now? Is this better? Okay, I, I really appreciate the clarification. The, I do understand that the, the zoning change is not that does not keep the hospital from doing something on the site. And if, if it's not approved, I appreciate that. And so it's, there's no easy decision here. At least for me.
All right, so it is a tough decision and I, I think that we've all said, my point is in, in this is that not to go to H2 in the zone. If the hospital did a mixed use of residential with, for example, commercial, that they had office, they had medical offices, that they had some treatment areas or potentially their research area. If they did a blend where you're not eliminating completely, where you're not overpowering, continuing to expand into the neighborhood where you've essentially taken it over, which is where I feel it's headed. Does anybody want to add anything? Do you feel like you're ready to vote? I would like us to get a little more unity if we could, but if it's not going to happen, it's not going to happen. Thoughts?
Ready to vote?
Nick is ready to vote, Yaski's ready to vote.
Is, is, is there any thing we could do to, to further engage the applicant at this point?
No, no, done deal, done deal. The application is closed, we're in decision mode. We are deciding the rezone only. We still have the text amendment before us and then we have the site plan and special permit. So, Mr. Yaski?
This is a question to you or Katie. Is it appropriate to talk about what happens in votes or is that not done?
What do you mean?
There's five of us voting.
There's five of us voting.
You, you need four, you need four in favor, one way or another, in order for the vote to carry. If it's a three-two or two-three, then that's a vote that fails to carry and is a de facto denial. We want to obviously try to avoid that so that we do have findings on the record. And we want to try to get a unanimous vote if we can.
I guess it was appropriate to talk about it.
Do you feel that we have given findings so far?
Yes, I, I think, yes. With, with a, with a zone change, obviously there's no conditions. It's either yes or no.
Right. Okey dokey then. Is everybody ready to vote? Please tell me if you're not ready to vote. Okay, if nobody is unready, I will call on you in the order that I'm looking at you. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote? How do you vote on changing the zone from RMF to H2?
I reject, I reject that, no. What, what else can I say?
Ms. Goss, how do you vote?
I'm opposed to, I reject the application for a zone change.
Mr. McRae?
Yay on the zone change.
Thank you. Mr. Levy? Mr. Levy?
He's unmuted.
Mr. Levy, if you would unmute and vote.
Sorry about that, yay, yay.
Okay, so, and Albin is also nay on the zoning change. The vote on the zoning change is three, I'm sorry, is three against and two in favor. Katie?
I thought I heard Mr. Levy saying nay. Which one, which one did you say? I thought you said no. So it would be a four.
No, I, I, it was positive, it was in favor.
So Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy and Mr. McRae have voted in favor of the zoning change. Albin, Yaski and Goss have voted against the zoning change. The zoning change fails to carry. Katie, do we do it the other way?
Yeah, I think, I think you should make a motion to deny just, I mean, it, it's a vote that failed to carry. So you, you are entitled to make another motion to, to, to deny it effectively. So I would suggest you do that.
Mr. McRae, can you vote?
You might want to just, you can, obviously, since it's a new motion, you can make it, you can have another discussion if you so choose.
Mr. McRae, are you okay with making a new motion?
Yes, Greenwich Hospital application, PLPZ 2021 00102 is for zoning map amendment. The applicant seek zoning map amendment to rezone properties located at 16 to 38 Lake Avenue and 54 through 64 Lafayette Place, eight parcels in total, from the RMF zone to the H2 zone for section 622 of the town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. Co-zoning map amendment is keeping with guiding principle six of the 2019, six, 2019.
You're, you're making a motion to deny, Mr. McRae, so you wouldn't.
Yes, I know that. And this is, this is the same motion that we made before. Commission finds that the proposed map amendment is in keeping with the guiding principle six of 2019 PO C D.
No, I'm sorry, no, Mr. McRae.
Okay, then, then we'll skip that and therefore motion to deny.
Let's just, and we have to make a finding that it's not consistent with, so let me just go ahead and do it. So. Okay, so Greenwich Hospital, a zoning map amendment to rezone the properties located at 16-38 Lake Avenue and 5464 Lafayette Place. That this, this proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the highest priority of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is the principle, guiding principle number one, to preserve our community character and sense of place. That further, it is an additional encroachment of commercial area into residential, which is against objective 1.2G of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I hereby move that this be denied. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yaski has seconded. Does anybody wish to discuss this motion to deny the zoning text amendment? There being no discussion, I will take a vote. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote on denying the zoning text amendment to rezone?
I agree, aye, whatever.
Okay, Ms. Goss?
Aye, I vote to deny this, the zoning change motion, deny the motion.
Mr. Levy?
No, 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 I vote to approve, I vote to approve the motion to deny.
Right.
Got it, we got you. I think we got you. Mr. Levy?
How about if you go to Mr. McCray?
Mr. McRae?
My vote is nay to deny the application for a zoning map amendment.
Mr. Levy?
Nay.
Albin is in favor of denying the zoning map amendment. Therefore, this motion also fails to carry with a vote of three-two to deny.
What does that mean?
What, what that means is it stays an RMF zone and it is not moved to a hospital zone. Which then, of course, you know, will have implications on the other two, two votes that you're going to be taking this evening.
All righty, so now we're going to go do the text amendment. And Mr. McRae, are you inclined, after I jumped all over you, to try to make a text amendment motion? And Mr. McRae, are you inclined, after I jumped all over you, to try to make a text amendment motion? Or you're going to say, oh, Albin, you're on your own?
Oh, I'll take care of this. Greenwich Hospital application, PLPZ 2021 010103, text amendment. Applicant is requesting a text amendment per Section 6205C of the Building and its Zoning Regulations to increase the maximum permitted building coverage in the H2 zone from 35% to 45% and the maximum permitted lot coverage in the H2 zone from 75% to 80%. Whereas the applicant had sought a zoning map amendment to rezone the properties located at 16 to 38 Lake Avenue and 54 to 64 Lafayette Place, from the RF zone to the H2 zone per Section 622 of Town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. The proposed zoning map amendment motion did not carry. Therefore, motion to deny the text amendment as proposed.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded the motion to deny the text amendment. In denying the text amendment, I would further add that it is inconsistent, even if we had approved the zone change, I would further add that this is inconsistent with Objective 4.4A of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which says that we should advocate for a reduction in site coverage as we consider better water protection and stormwater treatment, that we should be working on a reduction in site. That's the first point. In addition to it not, the zone not being valid in this area, since the text amendment is actually for any H2 zone that could be created, I would further add that it is, that I believe it has not been sufficiently explained why the hospital should be given greater building and site coverage than any other commercial use in town. We were told it meets the needs. Frankly, I would say that an automobile dealership could give us the exact same argument. They would say they need six bays to correctly fix the cars. We have all been there when people have told us that the only way they can run their business is by growing it to that point. And we have pushed back on those applications for the very same reason that we are pushing back now. We have limited the site coverage and building coverage. We are trying to reduce it in order to be a sustainable community and to protect the environment. And this is inconsistent with our other business zones, with our other commercial zones, and with the goals of our P O C D. Does anybody else want to comment? I know I didn't actually have a discussion. I know I stood on my pulpit, but there you go. Mr. Yesky?
I think we need a clarification. I've heard three negatives going on here. Where exactly are we now in this vote? What are we voting?
Mr. McRae moved that we deny the zoning text amendment. His reason for denying it, what the first reason he gave, was that the zone to which it would pertain right now would not be created. But in fact, we have an H2 zone already, and that zone exists and it, and is, they are proposing to amendment, amend it. So our reason-
I think it's actually, it's actually much similar than that. Their first request is to rezone properties from RMF to H2. That did not pass. It was not approved.
Nick, the H2 exists, so you have to recognize-
The H2 does not exist on the parcels that are being proposed to be rezoned.
But it does, it does-
Because it was, we didn't pass it.
Bendheim is H2, Nick.
Yes, but that project is not in front of us.
It doesn't matter. You're amending the zoning regulations, Nick, for all H2, not just for this.
Great, just move on then. Thank you.
Sorry. So since we are amending the zoning regulations for all H2, we can't base it on this, on the rezoning that was denied. We have to do it for our regulations, and any change in our regulations has to be consistent with the P O C D. I have given you two reasons I believe this zoning text amendment is inconsistent with the P O C D. Does anybody else wish to comment on this motion? No comment on the motion. Therefore, I propose that we amend, and I'm just going to do it on the fly, that we amend the motion to deny, that it be based on inconsistency of this proposal with the objectives of the P O C D that we have cited. The proposed text amendment is inconsistent with the P O C D, and therefore I will take a vote. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote on the text amendment? Do you vote to deny the proposed text amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Goss, do you vote to deny the proposed text amendment?
I vote to approve the motion to deny the text amendment.
Thank you. Mr. McRae, how do you vote on the-
Yay, to approve the denial.
To approve the denial. Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Okay, Albin is also aye, and that passes 5-0. We're making progress. Okay, now we have one more motion, the last motion. Now I know, Mr. McRae, this one is right in your neck of the woods. This is your baby, the site plan. And I know that you've got some comments and some conditions and some thoughts. Mr. McRae, our last, our last application to consider is a final site plan and special permit at 16-38 Lake Avenue and 54-64 Lafayette Place. Would you kindly make a motion?
Greenwich Hospital application, PLPZ 2021 0101.
We can't hear you, Nick. Nick can't hear you.
Greenwich Hospital application, PLPZ 2021 0101, final site plan and special permit. The applicant is seeking your approval to construct a regional care treatment center located at 16 to 38 Lake Avenue and 54 to 64 Lafayette Place in the H2 zone, per application, PLPZ 2021 0102. Whereas the applicant had sought a zoning map amendment to rezone properties located at 16 to 38 Lake Avenue, 54 to 64 Lafayette Place, eight parcels in the RMF zone, to H2 zone per Section 622 of the Town of Greenwich Regulations, Building Zone Regulations. The proposed zoning map amendment motion did not carry. Therefore, motion to deny the site plan and special permit as proposed.
I seconded. Mr. Yesky has seconded. I'd like to discuss this motion to deny and add some thoughts to it. Would, I'm going to just start it. The applicant has done a great deal to modify this building. To, the landscaping received rave reviews from A R C. However, again, the building, the proposed site coverage is in excess of what is now allowed in the zone. And in addition, I have this concern about, in, on the 617 portion of this, about consistency with the surrounding neighborhood and the existing uses in the neighborhood. That it does not, that it encroaches on them and does not preserve them. That, we also have addressed a very tight parking situation that will be handled by Valet and by an app, and although that is a creative and good solution, we are aware that it will be tight. In addition, the, it's hard to know, once you've approved this building, whether the trip generation would be closer to the I T E numbers than to the numbers that they themselves have calculated for the use they are currently contemplating. And that traffic number could be far greater than we can be certain about at this time. Those are the additional concerns that I would voice. I know that because this site plan is not, is not consistent with the underlying zone or the regulations, it would have to be denied. But I'm just adding those additional considerations. Does anybody else want to add additional considerations? No. Okay, in that case, if there is no further discussion, I will take a vote. Again, by how I'm seeing you, Mr. Yesky, this is an application to deny the final site plan and special permit. How do you vote on it?
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Goss?
I vote in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. McRae?
Aye, to motion to deny site plan and special permit.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes 5-0. Wow, thank you, everybody. I know y'all wandered around with your P O C Ds under your arms for a week. I certainly did, and I'm guessing everybody else did. Thanks for all the hard work. I know you gave us all your deep thought and consideration, and thank you, Katie, for the great staff work, and as well to Pat. This is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've ever made on the commission, and I expect many people, several of you, feel the same way. With that, I guess we can adjourn the meeting.